Time for regaining of the board trustees and start with the pledge.
I am the President of the United States of America. I declare your honor, the President of the United States of America. I declare you the President of the United States of Canada. I declare you the President of the United States of Scotland.
We'll call the roll.
Trusty Gray. Here.
Here.
Trusty Tiberio.
Here.
Trusty Rizzo.
Here.
Mayor Gifford.
Here. I have to deviate from the order here for just a second to have a moment of silence for, one for Frank Demasi who, the DPW Police and Fire had, said goodbye to him and he was a popular track coach and worked at CBS and most people knew him. Also in the paper today, H. Richard Lewis. Rich was a good friend of mine and a good friend of the village. Local attorney, he lived in the village for a long time. And just a really great guy, so just have a moment of silence for those two. Thank you. Item three. We have a couple of 20-year veterans. Dave, can you come up? We have, whereas Dave West began working for the Village of Scotia February 1st, 1999. Worked as a position of auto mechanic helper and also plows snow, operates equipment, generally serves in any capacity as needed. Dave West routinely displays his skills as a talented welder and fabricator to help DPW run efficiently and save the department and village money. Dave has served as a mentor for the younger members of the department by offering service, by offering advice and showing great patience and knowledge and training new employees. Dave, in his capacity as DPW Employee Association President, oversaw the successful transition to CSEA or a position. He's been a conscientious and an effective leader. The village recognizes David, Lee David West for 20 years of dedicated service. Jim?
I can't believe the village is still standing.
Your son was predicting he wouldn't show up. Okay. James the Archibald began working for the Village of Scotia February 1st. It says 1989, which is true.
Oh, yeah.
But?
99.
99. I'll fix it.
Can't retire early now?
Pete says so.
Jim envisioned the creation of an inline hockey youth league, built the Black Pleasurick and ran the league for over the 10 years. Jim was instrumental in the completion of every park improvement project in the last 20 years. Whereas Jim famously almost lost an eye battling with a Canada Goose and managed to come to work on time while having a heart attack.
You saved me.
And most importantly, always upbeat and positive attitude and boundless energy. The Village of Scotia recognizes Jamesy Archibald for 20 years of dedicated service. Thank you very much.
I'm not ready, everybody gave my applause right there.
So, yes, in honor of those two, and in honor of the, it's actually, this month is the 115th anniversary of the village. We have cake in the back, we're gonna take a break for cake and then if you guys wanna duck out, you're welcome to, but not before you get some cake. You guys wanna come up?
I'm 89, so I'm gonna, how do you? They got me on film. I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, item four, privilege of the floors. Would anybody like to be heard for the board? Seeing them with those privileges of the floor. And we're gonna table item five till work session. Item six, introduce a local law, 2019B, to amend the village code relating to no standing on certain hours. This is the one for, that the state asked us to do so that they could return the Route 50, Route 5 intersection to the way it was before. Anybody care to introduce that? Okay. You do understand that this change is only to make it more restrictive for parking than it is now?
The way it's written says it actually allows more parking. No.
Well, it's currently in our code that there's no parking from...
Seven to eight.
And this is allowing parking from six to nine?
It just should say that.
What?
Oh, it says not.
It should not be that way. No standing certain hours. Remembered to change the...
Is it parking?
Oh.
Oh, change the, I was, I was requesting from that.
But it's still no standing for those hours. I agree it's misleading, but it's, it's right out of our code the way it is, so this is making it more restrictive.
The only thing I would hope that we could do is, what we talked about in our work session was to have our Traffic Safety Committee take a look at this before we move to pass this into a law. I think we kinda had a consensus on that after the last meeting, so I was kinda surprised to see this on the agenda for this meeting.
Okay, well, should we table this one too?
I think so.
Yes.
I feel this is, the intersection the way it is right now, it seems to be running a lot smoother than it was before, so I have a...
Yeah, there's an argument to be said that it's gonna, it's as safe as it's gonna be right now until you can look at all four corners as one big picture rather than just changing it.
Right. I believe, yeah, for example, to me, I leave it the way it is, because the traffic moves through lanes east very smoothly and you're trying to cut across like that.
I agree.
Okay, item seven, introduce local law, 2019C, to amend village code stating to stop intersections, no standing and prohibited turns. Anybody care to introduce that one? How we're doing real well.
I, I just have a problem with this, the way the new law was written.
Okay.
Against the recommendation from the Traffic Safety Committee that the south side parking was removed.
Okay.
For the no standing, as far as the recommendation. Just wanted to know what the reason was for that.
That were pretty clear, okay, so we'll leave it the way it is, it's fine. I'm good with the way it is.
As it was written by the Traffic Safety Committee, though.
No, the way that the law is currently. Okay.
What's the law state, wait there, what's the law state now? About this?
I just thought we had to, I thought we had to pass the law to make it into code. But they wrote the recommendation, but we didn't pass the law, wasn't that what?
Yeah.
But we didn't pass a law yet.
Right.
So like, so there's a no standing signs, but there's no law to enforce it.
Correct.
And that's what this was for, right? Correct?
It's a mixed bag, it's a, it's a shorter, longer answer than that.
Okay.
Let's table that one too, I'm fine with that. Okay, item eight, the resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the 2019 summer recreation program?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you're over, that's right. Quick over there. You're quick over there. Give the new guys a... They're seniors.
Okay, item nine, resolution in connection to the village determination of non-significant, non-significance pursuant to seeker. Relating regulations, do we have to do that, the other thing first, or is that...
We did one last month with this resolution and then we agreed with our findings that it was not, so this is just a second secret.
Okay, so, so our Collins Lake Quality Stabilization Grant, we need to resolve that it's a negative declaration in terms of seeker. Have a resolution for that?
I'll make a resolution for that.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 10 is a resolution connecting with the village designating authorized representative, authorizing the local match and completing the seeker process for the pump station force main study engineering planning grant. I have a motion for that.
Okay, you said all that, what does that mean?
Yeah, should we go ahead with the grant first, for the force main study that we agreed on?
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, item 11, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Prime AE Group of New York for, who is that, Prime, other than?
This is...
I said WHA grant.
That's the wastewater grant that we received. Angie, we couldn't give a better explanation of the wastewater grant?
It's the, so, the large grant through EFC that we received, I'm gonna say, going on maybe two years ago, they're finally ready to close on it. So, in the grant estimate was funds to have someone administer the grant. It's quite a process through EFC. And Prime, who is doing the design work for us, submitted a proposal to do that. And it's within the funds that were allotted in the amount. Which is basically hiring Prime to administer the grant for us.
Okay, can we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
opposed? Item 12, we have a resolution authorizing mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Scotia Permanent Firefighters Association. This is the scheduling changes with their contract to allow the two 12-hour guys to work in with the contract.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
I was explaining to Joe earlier, you guys have that resolution or the agreement. Item seven in the agreement is, has to do with time off hours that we allow those, the two 12-hour members. We're having question with the wording on that, I think. My intent and what I hope is the intent of the board is that they, those firefighters get the same time off benefit that any starting firefighter would get. We need to, I need to have permission to change the language if it needs changing to make that so. It's a, it's a minor tweak, we just don't have the exact language yet. So if we can approve it with that provision, or if we wanna put it off till our work session, we could vote on it. I don't care what...
You can approve it as per the change you made.
Okay, that's good, I mean, fine.
I'll just go make the motion on that.
Okay.
Tom, sign, second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Item 13 is the Village Historians Report, we're just putting that in the record. We set up patterns for that, right? Item 14 is mayor's comments to the board. Just fill you in on a few things, I've been seeing a lot of people and we had a meeting last week with Baptist Retirement, talking about the possibility of a fire training thing in their backyard. That Ken has a couple of things to work on, but it was basically preliminary, don't have any real report. After that, we had a meeting with Chris Ketsley in Glenville, talking about the District Four fire contract. He had a possible solution to our impasse. Ken and I both had a little trouble understanding it, but we're working on it. Monday, George and I went to a NICOM meeting in Albany. It was pretty interesting, we had, we talked a lot about the AIM funding, but there were also a lot of work sessions on the side for different things and I think we learned a little with George.
Yep.
Yesterday, I had a meeting with Mark Egan, who's the District Chamber of Commerce CEO. It was basically just a get-to-know-you meeting. He's, seems like a decent guy and willing to help us and glad to have the village as a member. Today, I had a meeting with Gary McCarthy in Schenectady. Pretty much just saying that we're doing pretty well with the things we're sharing. We talked quite a bit about their zombie property program, which Lewis mentioned today, he's got a couple of prospects for that. I wanna see if we can get on, their thing is really a county program, so I've been trying to get in touch with the county person in charge of that. So far, with no success. And tomorrow, I've got a meeting with Ray Gillan, so we'll probably be talking about the Corporation Spark development quite a lot. Andrew, if you could stay after and talk to me a little bit, we can do that. And that's all I got. Item 15, Correspondence Liaison Special Committee Reports. Joe?
I have no report this month.
Yeah?
Busy month, we had a zoning meeting, actually, we did some training. We have several new members and they're eager to get going on there. We also had not one, but two bid meetings in between our last two meetings. We have four or five new businesses that were at the bid meeting and they're working on possibly doing a, like a village-wide ribbon-cutting ceremony in the spring for all the new businesses that have opened up here. And even heard a few people that said they were going to volunteer for the Special Events Committee because they're eager to get some more business involvement there. Yep, the barbecue people were there, the bee-inspired ladies is there, the new owner of the flower shop is there. So it's nice to hear from everybody and see everybody. And I just wanna give a shout out to the DPW guys, it's nice to see that new piece of equipment that we approved on the road. It's really cool to see something that we come up with here and they see it out. And it probably came, what, the day before our last snowstorm?
It came like a day after.
Okay.
Which was actually fine because...
I saw them out there moving piles with it, so it's good to see that.
And it didn't have license plates, but Pete missed that.
They're really not required.
We were, we're thrilled to have it, it's been a huge, a huge improvement for the department.
That's all I have.
I wanna add my bit to the, I got my days mixed up because of the Monday meeting, the NICOM meeting and remembered the bid meeting on my way back over the bridge. And Tom was just leaving when I got there. So I went in and said hi to everybody and it was like our, I'm always impressed by our cider and donuts event in October, that the village people come out and they stay around for hours, an hour after we're talking. This was a room full of the Scotia business people, they were standing around talking for 20 minutes after, at least after the meeting finished. It was pretty nice.
Probably one of the best meetings you had.
Yeah. George?
Similar to Tom, it was a busy month for me. I got to meet with the, one of my liaison appointments is with the Village Historian Beverly, she's got a lot of nice things going on down there. She really does have some good ideas too for the year upcoming. She's trying to get together a lot more history about the village. We talked about possibly maybe having like kind of a little open house to try and bring some people together and talk a little bit more about how the buildings were here before, you know, years ago and now, so it's really great to have her. I've been, I first met her last year in my garden efforts. We planted, we planted hops which failed miserably unfortunately. I'm hoping to make those a little bit better this year. Also had my first traffic safety meeting with Chief Rzoni and Fire Chief. We met Tom Lemlander for the first time, who's a great asset to the village. He's got years of traffic planning, traffic planning experience that's being well-used and very much appreciated for all the things that we do here to try and keep things safe. It was great to see that there's so much thought put into all of the things and I've, I've been working in work zones and creating traffic plans for the better part of my career during my day job and it's a, it's a pretty granular discussion when you start talking about it and it's great to have all the professionals involved in it. I've been to a couple of school board meetings too, which are always fun and just like Tom mentioned, the NICOM meeting. It was great to see a lot of the, a lot of the other municipalities come together to talk about the things that are going on. We had the opportunity to listen to Letitia James, who's our Attorney General, speak and it's, I really feel great about where her efforts are being placed as far as what she's doing for New York State. And another, there was the mayor from Richmondville, had a, we had one of the work sessions was, the last one I attended that day was about emergency response planning, so I have all these ideas bouncing around my head, I'm probably gonna come talk to you guys at some point in the near future about where those are at and should we have something more in place, so. And then my communications project, I just started discussing with a couple of vendors and I'm gonna be getting those costs back, you know, by the next meeting I believe it, so I'll have some costs back to try and see if it is a viable option for us to consolidate those together, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen?
I don't have any, any news, nothing to report.
Thanks, Mike. Correspondent Liaison Special Committee Reports. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, we did that, right? Yes. Item 16, Departmental Reports. Can I have the motion to accept the Departmental Reports?
I'll make the motion with thanks, I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 17, Audit Claims. You have a motion to pay our bills?
To pay our bills, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Call the roll?
Trusty Gray, yes, Trusty Seltzer.
Yes.
Trusty Tiberio.
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Gifford.
You have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 9th special meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 9th regular meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got a motion to approve the minutes of the February 8th special meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 21, New Business.
I have a piece of new business. I've already submitted a copy, I'm already, I'll write it all down.
No, you don't have to read the whole thing either.
Basically, I'm offering a resolution, I'll read the end of it. Basically talks about our AIM funding and how the governor's proposal is to remove it. So basically, I'm making a resolution that the Village of Scotia Board Trustees hereby calls upon the governor to rescind his proposal to eliminate AIM funding for most towns and villages and encourage him to restore all funding within upward adjustment for inflation and further ask that the legislator codify such indexed annual increase in the law and be a further resolve that the Village of Scotia Board Trustees directs the village clerk to send certified copies to our governor, senator and assembly member along with a press release to the Daily Gazette and Times Union. So I'm gonna make a motion that we accept this.
Can we, can we just stipulate that we'll send the press release out and not have that part of the resolution, that seems a little strange. Do you mind?
Yeah, just put it on there so that way we feel it, so. I just want it to be...
We promise you we'll do it.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay.
I would second that motion and it really disturbs me because if the village loses this kind of money, it's really, it's really gonna hurt us all. You've been talking back and forth on this and you know what my feelings are on this thing and I think we'll do whatever we can as a ward to make sure our feelings are known and like every other town and village, Michigan is doing one, Glendale's doing one, Rotterdam's doing one.
The county's doing one too now. I was, I was worried that it was gonna, that the governor might feel like they were poking him with a stick and refuse, you know, grants or something like that, but I'm told that's not the case, so let's just go ahead and do it.
I'm poking him with a stick.
Yeah, with a stick, so.
Yeah, I think it's a very troubling, one of the statistics that you had in the correspondence, it's Schenectady County alone stands to lose $500,000.
Right.
Yep.
And that's our neighbors, that's us, you know, including our part of it, so it's, I think it's important to poke them with a stick.
Yeah, and Michigan is gonna lose 7, 174,000 and the county of Glendale's gonna lose almost the same. Rotterdam, I haven't heard yet, but they're, they're up there too. So it's not only us, it's everybody and like you said, we're better off with numbers all those together, sending notices out everywhere, anywhere we have to send them.
With the city maintaining almost 12 million.
Right, and they're not even getting to talk to me.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Harry? Any other new business? Can I have a...
I do have, I don't know if you wanted to do, is that DWI agreement?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought that was in here.
We just got it yesterday and Pete just got each year, he might be...
Okay, Pete, can you explain that?
Yeah, it's literally, it just delivered.
Mr. Ewell, right?
It's the yearly agreement between the village and the county, the village is gonna participate in Stop DWI initiatives, in which we have different planned events through the year and all overtime details that we do associated with it is that amount of money is reimbursed by the county through the Stop DWI program, which is completely funded by fines from DWI RSDs. So we have the, it's a formal agreement accepting those reimbursement monies as they occur between the village and the county.
So it's just a resolution to have the mayor sign the agreement?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I'll raise that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Anybody have anything else? Have a motion to return?
So, fair.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.